Item five, adopting the agenda, the corrections or additions to the agenda, if not an entertaining motion.
Motion to approve the agenda.
So I have a motion by council member Hubbard. Second by council member Wong to adopt the agenda. Discussion. draw an graph here for my who's done what. Discussion, hearing none. Council member Wong.
Aye.
Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
Council member Hatfield.
Yes.
Council member Gra.
Yes.
And Mayor Woodshuttle, aye. Pass this. All right, moves us to item number six, which is visitor presentation. I don't see anybody here for visitor presentation, so we'll move past that. And we'll move into item seven. Pardon? Yeah, that's what I asked, wasn't it? There is no one on Zoom. Thank you, Kevin, for reminding me. I always forget that now. Still a challenge. We're working through it. With that, we'll move to item seven, approving previous meeting minutes. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, add entertain a motion to approve. Motion to approve. Motion by council member Hatfield.
Second.
Second by council member Gra. Discussion. Hearing none. Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
Council member Wong.
Aye.
That's not right, but you are now. Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
I got this all goofed up. Hatfield.
Aye.
Yes.
Gra.
Aye.
Woodshuttle, aye. Sorry about that. Can't read my own notes. All right, moves us to item eight, which is consent agenda. Again, if there are no corrections or additions, I would entertain a motion. We have a lot of items here, so if there's any questions, but we can do the motion in second, and we can do any discussion from that point.
Motion to approve consent.
Motion by council member Wong.
Second.
Second by council member Hatfield. Discussion. I just had a couple items that so the the one about, where is it, in the the vacation of Cardinal Street, is that just that end portion that goes down to the past that main driveway? Is that the portion? I couldn't tell by the map exactly what that was showing because it says we're correcting it from initially, so I'm not sure what that was really meaning.
I'd like Kevin to address that one.
Yeah, there was a small piece that got left out of the legal description in your original piece, and we're going back to pick that up. So it was down kind of on the south side there, but we had missed a piece in the original description and just going back, so it's not effectively changing anything. It's just our, we need to get our legal description correct.
So it was just a legal, legal piece of it. It's the same piece of the roadway?
Yeah.
Okay. And then that, that lot split out at Bavaria now are, are out on, by
Bavaria Downs.
Bavaria Downs. So again, as I read through it, is that, so Bavaria Downs is splitting to give lots, so it's a bigger area off of 82nd Street then? Is that the way that's going?
Correct, correct. Bavaria Downs, I mean, I assume with everything that's happening is trying to, you know, raise capital and selling off some of their land to an adjacent property owner is one of those pieces. And so one of the landowners along 82nd Street had approached them to buy some land, and so they want to split off a small, well, not a small, a, a portion of their property to raise some capital and also the adjacent neighbor wants to add on to their land as holdings as well, so.
So are they looking at doing a development or just having more land for themselves?
I think at this point, just land because development up there is very challenging.
That's what I, because I thought there's no sewer and water and, I mean.
Yeah, there's, there's no, there's no paved street on 82nd. Paved street on McKnight, and there's, there's a bunch of work to do, so I'm assuming they're hoping that someday that maybe that pays off, but for right now, they just want, I think, some extra land to their holdings. They were the property owners who purchased the land from the University of Minnesota, I believe.
Oh, it's that group, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're just basically.
I'm assuming someday they're wanting to just have as much, yeah.
And they're just land's cheaper when there's nothing there, I suppose, so.
Correct.
Okay, and like I said, it was just one of them. I, I just wasn't totally clear on, and then that, that other piece, I, I think part of the questions got was that excess property in that southwest Chaska, because I, I just wasn't clear of the acreage and, and that stuff and but it sounds like it's what, two, two some acres?
Just over two acres, correct. About one acre buildable, about one acre unbuildable.
And what I'm understanding is, is that's just going to be more of for them to create a retention?
Yeah, they, they need the, the backside of that piece for some stormwater and also some preservation pieces, but primarily what their interest is, is they have some strange wedges along the street, and this would make that complete, and they're proposing to come forward in October with a subdivision plat, which would make the remaining, I think, four or five lots on that street to finish out that portion of the subdivision, which is kind of what they've been waiting for.
Okay, so then it makes perfect sense to go and sell it to tradition.
I think it's important to point out, when we lock Charles property, we also anticipate that we'd have some revenue source from this to be able to help offset that cost.
Right. All right. Anyone else have any questions? Anything? I just, those are a few that I had, so. All right, I'm hearing none. With that, I'll do a roll call. Council member Hatfield. Council member Gra.
Yes.
Council member Wong.
Aye.
Council member Hubbard.
Aye.
Mayor Woodshuttle, aye. I did it right that time, didn't I? Oh, getting there. All right. We have no action items tonight, so that is rather different, but we had all of those consent items that needed it. So with that, we'll move into item 10, which is bills. Again, if there are no corrections or additions or questions, I would entertain a motion to pay the bills.
Questions? So page three, for Baker Tully, there was one that's, the text of it was southwest transportation model. I'm assuming that was for the 21244 interchange or some, or the workaround there, not southwest transit, correct?
Yeah, it's not just the interchange, but it's basically our entire collector's system up there and making sure that we're generating enough in transportation fees and, and MSA dollars to be able to afford all that.
Okay. Page five, Braun Intertech Corporation. It says downtown recon CMT. What does the CMT indicate?
Construction material testing. And basically, it's some of the archaeological testing that's being done around the city square park area as we look towards future reconstruction to make sure that we're not getting into some historic areas that we can't.
So this is like kind of a continuation of that, that's kind of still been gone, going on for a while. Page 10, DAMA material, metal products, sorry, DAMA material products. It's a lockbox demo for inspect. What is exactly, what is that exactly?
So lockbox is for the fire department to be able to have on the extra buildings to be able to get in. You know, if there were a fire emergency, this particular one, I think they're looking at trying a different kind, and so they purchase a small quantity, be able to test these out.
The lockboxes that are currently on some of the building probably aren't the securest, so we're looking at doing some.
Got it. So this is basis of fire access, and then, and this is installed in just city buildings, or is it?
This is for, this can be for private, like apartments and stuff like that. Basically, any of those, those buildings that have large occupancies in them, we need to be able to have the fire department have a way to get access into them.
Any building that has a sprinkler system, you have to have access to sprinkler systems.
Something here every day. Page 12, electrical materials company. There's an item for ped uprights, eight by eight by 42. What is that exactly?
The ped uprights are basically when you're in your front lawn and you see that green box, it's about like this. So it's those, and basically, because we have so much development going on, we have to have a stock of those. Now, they have to be purchased by the developer to put them, put in there, but we're the ones that actually install them and put them in.
So it's like stocking up on something, it's effectively becomes a pass through at some point?
Yeah, it's inventory for.
Okay. Page 16, Minneapolis St. Paul, it's listed as reg econ dev par. And so I know we talked about some of this last year. It's a very like, it says annual investment, there's 2020 annual investment. If you refresh us in what that is again, why it's called an investment rather than like a, you know, membership or a fee?
Well, so it's, it's for Greater MSP, which is a regional economic development authority, and so we belong to them to basically keep in the pipeline for any sort of regional projects that are looking for sites. So, you know, like, for instance, our data centers, we got through this pipeline, and, and so it's really some of those bigger projects that are looking for locations in this, in the Twin Cities. It keeps us in the pipeline of it. It's called an investment because we're not actually allowed to be a member of an organization. We can just contribute to help, to, to help invest towards those activities that they do to be able to, you know, provide that service to municipalities. So it's called an investment, but it's, it acts like a membership. So if we contribute, then we end up being included in the leads that they have when they have different companies that are looking for locations.
So practically speaking, Greater MSP helps to do like, does like regional marketing of, you know, for communities, so this would be to make sure that from a, you know, how the, how they operate sort of consistent. They're basically helping to market Chaska's properties to, to development. So for example, someone says, hey, I want to build a data center. MSP's out there marketing to different, you know, vendors or different.
Yeah, I mean, the practical, the practical interaction that we have with them is that they'll have somebody come to them saying they need something, and then as members, they have us respond to an RFP to basically say, do we have a site that meets this, these qualifications? So it's, that's the, the most direct interaction that we have with them.
So they're kind of that feeder to us for these organizations, yeah?
Definitely participated with them in economic development shows and things like that. So we've definitely been a big part of Greater MSP since they started. But the most day-to-day operational type of way we get involved is those feeds, the feeds of leads.
So it's more of a, it's more of a response-based thing. It's not like we said, you know, like, hey, I want a Trader Joe's, can you go and get me Trader Joe's here, right? Because I know we get asked that like a bazillion times, so.
Typically focused on commercial. They're focusing on more of the, more of the corporate office industrial type of stuff.
So if someone says, you know, someone says, I need to build like a new corporate campus for some large organization, I'm going to go to Greater MSP to find out whether the opportunities that might be in Twin Cities.
We need a 20-acre site that can accommodate this much office and blah, blah, you know, this needs to have this much for utility capacity. Basically, you know, a big part of what Nate does is to respond to those to be able to get those sites out there.
Sounds good. And then. With grant applications as well. So like Formacode is an example. They helped us in our application process with deed to get some of the MIF dollars that supported that project. So that's another function that they've done.
They also are the ones that helped us initially get the, the million dollars of infrastructure grant that we got out at our data centers out there. So we've definitely seen return on the investment for being involved in them.
That's actually really good to hear. It's one of those things in a sense that, you know, this, you know, payment itself is like a small thing that, you know, it's sure like over the years, it's just more than paid for itself, and even that million-dollar grant, and hopefully it'll continue paying in the future, right?
Yeah, and the great thing about this group is it's not just public sector groups. It's actually, most of their board is made up of Fortune 500 companies in the Twin Cities, so I know like EcoLab and General Mills and, and those type, type of companies, along with some public sector representation make up their board. But it's definitely a public-private sort of partnership, which makes it different than deed at the state of Minnesota because they have that public-private partnership.
This is more like, and this is more like up, a private, so, you know, this is sort of the part, you know, the partnership intended to drive business to our region from a, a private money perspective. Right, okay. Pages 19 through 21, and I also noticed a similar thing on pages 37 and 38 for Clues Electric, and then Rob's Electric also did the same thing too. I noticed that they, there was like 20 different line items, or effectively the same thing of like, you know, work order for downtown reconstruction. I understand that there was work done for downtown reconstruction, but why was it broken up into these like tiny little pieces for both of those electric vendors?
So this was our electric going from over, overhead to underground service, and so there's trunk line services that we bring underground, but there's also service lines that we bury through people's yards, which in essence are theirs, and so they have to pay for those, the service lines. And so by breaking these out, we're able to basically show what cost was associated with each lot.
So they do pay that then?
Service line, not the trunk charge. With, the service line is pretty inexpensive. It's, it's the trunk through the alley that ends up being the most expensive.
No, is it, they charge twice because they're doing different things for each property, or do they just kind of divide it, so you do these properties and you do the other properties?
Yeah, one is more of the burying the line, and the other one is more of the hooking it up, the line up to the, to the home.
Paul says overhead to underground, and I don't know what Rob says.
Yeah, so, you know, some are more electrician, some are more utility line barriers.
Got it. So they each to go different, they have their specialty areas. Okay. Page 32, for Patchen Messenger Appraisals, there is a 2.3 acres of excess land. So, so I understand what this was for in terms of the payment, but generally speaking, what's that process used for the termination of land valuation that they use? Because do they look at it as, you know, a buildable, non-buildable, and what's he won't use, or do they evaluate the whole parcel? What's kind of that process that's used in this? I mean, this.
All of the above. So they basically, they have to find comparables, just like they would in any other appraisal. They look at what's buildable, what's not buildable. You know, what's buildable is actually easy, because you have easy comparisons to stuff that's going on around it. The non-buildable stuff is usually a percentage of that buildable, so, so basically, they look at all of the above, but it's, you know, it's a, it's a real appraisal, so it's, it's, it goes through all the steps of a, an actual appraisal.
So they effectively have to go through and, you know, evaluate from like multiple different angles to make sure that they're kind of looking at from like, whether it's, you know, like the buildability perspective, or if they kept it as private, or if it's sold off to, you know, the full development or whatever, what options are available. Okay. Got it. Page 41, social indoor LLC. I know there are like a, a, a media marketing company. It's paid for advertising, but what, and I know this is for, it looks like it's for a town course, but where are we marketing to? Just kind of wondering, what's our target?
So, right now. To a sense. So we, so we budgeted like at the town course, $21,000 for marketing last year. We've spent about $7,700 of that this year. So we have Minnesota Golfers Magazine, their directory issue. So they do both onsite and then hard copy editions. We do social indoor, which is what you're seeing, which is basically those ads that you see when you're standing at the urinal. So those, those are all over sort of our demographic area to advertise that. We do Explore Minnesota's Golf Alliance, which is to co-op with, you know, multiple advertising avenues that really sort of go out to regional golf shows to help get more regional destinations here. And then we do just various types of things, so, you know, we might do some directories. Golf Minnesota has stuff, so it just sort of, it's about 1,200 of that is just sort of general marketing and, and smaller things.
Got it. And last question here, page 50. This was so Zayo Group Holdings Fiber Maintenance. Now, we're part of Carver Link. We're not part of Carver Link. So, because Carver County built that.
Big stuff for that.
So we, so, okay, so that's, me, you have to go back on a little history of this, because, so I'm trying to understand like how this maintenance kind of fits into it, but if we're not part of Carver Link, then we're basically paying for maintenance of our own stuff. Okay.
Yeah, so we, we installed our fiber loop in town, boy, probably almost a decade before Carver Link existed, maybe about seven years or so before that. That's how we started Chaska.net service that we had. We provided fiber service to the school district and to Klein Bank and data centers and stuff like that. And, and then, you know, our primary use is to be able to connect all our city facilities up to each other so that we're on the same network. But that existed significantly longer before Carver Link did, and so, yeah, we pay for all the maintenance ourselves.
Because when I look at the map, it, you know, the Carver Link map shows all these connections coming off of like 41 going over down Engler over to community center and stuff, which if that's the case, looks like they're sort of overlaying what's our fiber network.
Mine where they have to come from though. They have to come from the courthouse, and so they have to go through Chaska. But we don't get charged for that. So the other communities that actually have that go-to-it, get charged for it, they have to go through our right-of-way to be able to provide that. So there is right-of-way permits and things that they need to get, but they have no option but to go through Chaska to, to provide service, but we're not actually getting service from them.
So like when, so when we look at the map from Carver, like it shows lines like coming off of 41, which so presumes that there were kind of doubling up, there's like two lines, there's ours, and then there's Carver Link. And then, but what's going to the community centers are, it's not Carver Link, which is interesting, because it looks like, if you look at the map, it looks like Carver Link is going to the community center, or going to, you know, going to all the different schools in our district.
Yeah, no, it's, we provide it all through our own line, and, and ours, like I said, ours came significantly earlier than, than Carver County did.
And so they are separate, and it's separate physically, separate entities. Okay.
There's separate lines. I think there's some places where maybe when we expanded, we shared some trenching to, to maybe decrease on, on trenching costs, but for the most part, it's completely separate.
And I understand from a business perspective that Carver Link is openly available to any providers who wish to piggyback off of that to offer service. So if some like MediaCom or someone, you know, or I know, like, I know some other network came to town and said, we're going to offer ISP services, we'll piggyback off of Carver Link network. They can, you know, pay a fee, hook in, and then provide, you know, downstream services to that, you know, that last mile service to homeowners. But is that the same case with the Chaska network, or is it not?
Yeah, absolutely. We could do that if we chose to, and like I said, we have had some where we've been the service provider to some private end users, but, you know, you know, I, I, you know, it's always case by case. You'd have to go and evaluate whether you have enough capacity and whether that's the right thing to do and what the cost would be. You know, but we, you know, we could look at that in, in the future as being something to, you know, to be able to look at infrastructure. You know, that's now again, whether we, what we can do and what we should do are really two different things, because primarily, this is our city infrastructure link for our internal services.
Reason why I ask this, because I know that I've, I've gotten an increasing number of people asking about like, why is, why is Comcast the only game in town? I went to the, the, was it the MediaCom website, and they said they service our area, and then they went to their site, and then they said they couldn't, and so it's really misleading. But, you know, like one of the most prevalent concerns that I hear is that, well, you know, it's costing me like 200 bucks a month for cable. Why isn't there any competition? Why are you guys making a monopoly? And I know that we're not making a monopoly, because it's.
It's important for people to understand, we have a franchise agreement with Comcast, but it's not exclusive. So any cable, any cable company can come in. The only thing that a franchise agreement does is it provides them with a right-of-way to be able to, to put their line in, to be able to go and serve the community, and we get compensated for that. But any company could come in and do that. The reason they don't is it's way too expensive for them to do that.
They all kind of divvy up there.
And I think the reality is, is that once a company has a franchise agreement in place, they all just sort of stay away from it. Yeah, because it, yeah, you know, and that question comes up in every city. That's, it doesn't matter if you have MediaCom or if you have Comcast, you always think that the one that's in another community is always better than the one you have. Yeah, so it's, but it's, it's something that another company absolutely would have the capability of coming in. We would do a franchise agreement with them, just like we do with Comcast, and, and they could do that. We've just never had anybody inquire to actually do that.
Cool. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I have a general overview question for you. So I know still a lot like refunds, and I'm assuming there in regards to the community center memberships, just different people. How is that going as just a general?
Question. It's actually holding steady, pretty good. We, where we saw, so we saw sort of two waves. We saw sort of an initial wave when we first shut down back in March. That wasn't a huge wave, because we basically said that we weren't going to charge anybody until they came back, and we were going to prorate that back. Once we opened things back up, we did have, we did have some more people canceled, because now, you know.
They're getting charged.
Yeah, then there was no penalty for them to be in it before. And so it's definitely, there's definitely been cancellations, but I would say we're actually doing okay. There's still, I mean, we talked about this back when we did the budget amendment. There's still no question that the community center is going to get majorly impacted this year, because we were closed for four to five months. I mean, we're estimating about a $1.5 million hit to that. But, but I would say that we've been getting really good feedback from people who have been coming into the community center, that they feel safe, and you know, and, and, you know, generally feel comfortable coming back in, and the classes have been getting busier too, which is good. And just anecdotally, my wife started doing classes last week when, when school started, and she made the comment of saying how nice it was when you go into these classes, how before, you know, especially drop-in classes could be really crowded. Now, everybody's got their own X that they're on, you know where to go, and, and so we've been getting really good feedback on, on the processes we've been using. And ultimately, I think in the long term, I think that's what's going to play out best for us. I mean, it's still going to take some time to get people back, but I think the fact that we're being ultra careful about making sure people feel safe going there, I think is going to play well for us in the long term.
I just, curiosity in regards to looking at that and knowing that it's reopened and houses shutting. Yeah, okay. Thank you. That's my only question.
Are, are numbers increasing? Are, are the numbers increasing there?
Increasing, but you know, it's, it doesn't represent additional revenue, because it's, it's just more members feeling comfortable to come back. So they've already.
Haven't had like new signups, like new memberships, have you? Have you?
Yes.
Is some of it related to just like recreational programming and things? Or is it actual membership use of the facility itself?
Ask what, I know Marshall made a point to tell me when we talked about it a couple weeks ago. He goes, well, we have some people actually signing up new, which I thought was a real encouraging sign.
Yeah, okay.
I, I can find out a little bit more about that, just.
Yeah, curious, just, yeah, like, you know, long-term vision there, so.
Okay, anyone else on bills? Hearing none. I don't remember. Do I have a motion in a second?
No, I'm not.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion in a second to pay the bills. So move. Motion by council member Wong.
Second.
Second by council member Hubbard. Discussion. Hearing none. Council member Gra.
Yes.
Council member Wong.
Aye.
Member Hubbard.
Yes.
Council member Hatfield.
Yes.
Mayor Woodshuttle, yes. All right, moves us to other business. Council member Hatfield.
Not a whole lot. Just wanted to mention that early vote, or September 8. And there's the food distribution event. And there's the, a food distribution event Wednesday from four thirty to six at the old Gedney factory. Which by the way, is looking really nice with its new paint job and windows and such. So, that's all I had. Those two quick things.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hatfield. Hubbard, the other H. God, having a rough night tonight.
Yeah, just a few things. I hadn't been, I had been invited on by Sheriff Camrood to join his community policing advisory or meeting. Just different members of the community and leaders and everything, so. We met again, we're going to meet every other week now, but we met again this last Wednesday. It was a very productive meeting, I think. Having our chief on there as well, just the continuity between both, both sheriff and chief working together just to kind of talk about different aspects that can improve transparency and trust in the community, so. A very effective meeting. I just today went on a golf course tour of the town course with our, our head golf guy, Mr. Kellen. And he drove me all around, so it was really nice to be able to see the facility and kind of talk about things.
Out there and see it.
It's gorgeous. Yeah. I, all I wanted to do is actually sit at a table out on the patio and just look at that view, so. But yeah, so that, that was great, learning a little bit more. I look forward to next week, our talk about the par thirty. And then I saw on Facebook and the Carver County, the development agency, they had reopened the window for, I'm playing up my notes, sorry. They reopen the window for the small business emergency assistance program for Carver County here. So it's open, the application is open again until Friday, September eighteenth, five P M. And, you know, they'll be on a waiting list to possibly receive the ten thousand dollars. So the, if you go over to the Carver County Minnesota Government Facebook page, you can link over or go to the C D A website. Fill out the application. And like I said, it's, it's a very simple application. So I encourage anybody who owns a business that has seen a decline in their revenue to fill that out. I had an email from someone or in regards to following up on the chicken ordinance, which is something that's being followed up on, but I just want to put it on the record that we are working on that.
Is right here.
Public record right here. So that is being, still being reviewed and looked at. And there is a Carver County Commissioner forum, right? Candidate forum, like kind of an unofficial one because the league isn't doing it, but it's this Thursday. I think if you go to the county's YouTube channel, you can watch.
Is it less official because the league's not doing it?
Well, I don't, I mean, I don't, it's not like, I don't know, I guess, yeah, I mean, I guess the league's doing is make it official. But I mean, it's, it's official. It's just not the, through the league, I guess. I'm sorry. That was my bad in communications.
Is it, dare you say, because it seems like.
I think it's the seventh, it's this Thursday.
Seventeenth, yes.
Seventeenth. It's this Thursday and I think it's at like six.
Meeting starts the sixteenth, right?
Friday, eighteenth. It's the day before. So. Yeah. That's my story.
So that, Task Force you're sitting on with, how many, how big a group is that?
It's a small group.
I mean, a dozen?
Say, yeah, like maybe not even a dozen. Just like the, you know, really people of Carver County are invited on. I'm just playing. No, it's, I, I'm very impressed with Sheriff Camrood and just every, you know, even from the first time, I mean, I got kind of entered into the mix a little meeting late and, but just from the second to this meeting.
Cool enough at first or what?
I was not cool enough at first, but I got, I found the password to get into the club, so. Yeah, really, really good. I'm excited for, for our county and our city with that. That's it for me. Yeah.
Tomorrow one.
Okay, let's see. Well, first of all, school's back in session since we were last here, so it's a good thing that a lot of our kids are physically back in school. I think high schools are still operating in distance learning and my understanding is that the intent is that they're trying to move to in-person or hybrid. But like staffing challenges are, you know, what's the culprit there? So I think they're, you know, those schools are trying to work right now to get them into that mode. But it's good that the kids are engaged and, you know, my daughter's actually attends Chaska High School. And starting up this fall has been a lot more positive than what was going on this spring because they're much more organized and structured. Even at distance learning, it still feels more like a classroom setting. You know, there's times they're in class, they're going to class and, you know, they're actually interacting together. So it's, you know, it's a better, it's, they've had time to think through this, so it's definitely going better than it was in the spring. But still, you know, hope to get kids back in the classrooms as soon as you can. Couple upcoming events. Lunch Ministry has an online fundraiser because they weren't able to have the fundraiser in the spring that they would normally have. And the online fundraiser is on Wednesday, September twenty-third from seven to eight P M. My Health, for those who aren't aware, is actually a nonprofit that provides healthcare services to, to teens and young adults ages, what, fourteen to twenty-six. And to provide general healthcare, everything from, you know, like sports, physicals, mental health and things like that. They've served, served traditionally this area. They're based out of Hopkins. They used to be based in Excelsior. But they have a strong partnerships with a number of, a number of nonprofits in our area, including, including on New Beginnings. And so they're having their annual fundraiser on October second from seven to seven forty-five P M. So this is myhealthmn.org for anyone who's interested in that. There's a food truck festival at City Square Park on September twenty-fifth. Sounds like there's at least, you know, a fair number, half dozen or so different food trucks that are signed up for that. So if anyone's interested in, in partaking in that, that was happening at City Square Park on the twenty-fifth.
Pause there. That's not happening, is that? That, that, that's, there's rogue posts being put up about that happening. But I, I don't think there's been any permits issued to have that.
So that was, because they're still advertising it, yeah.
Well, that's, we talked about that at our last E O C meeting, that River City Days is canceled and that was part of River City Days. So we don't know who's posting that, but as far as we know, there are no.
You say it was sort of a ghost Facebook page out there.
It's kind of a weird deal, like.
So there's officially not.
So it's not happening.
Yeah, it's the one that's by the food truck channel that's posting it or something like that, that's, that's a fake.
Probably just have it down. Probably just haven't taken that event down. Right.
The other one's not.
And they said that it's a rogue one that they reported to Facebook.
That's weird.
I wanted to make sure that we got that.
Thank you.
To the best of our knowledge, that is canceled.
That's canceled. And also along the same lines, the Night to Unite is not happening too, right? Because it was rescheduled, supposed to be October.
Cancelled as well.
So because Night to Unite, I know is a big one. It was rescheduled to the Texas date.
Every, again, we had this long conversation about it in the E O C. Everything about the purpose of what Night to Unite is, is what we shouldn't be doing right now. So there's really no point in having Night to Unite and you can't do what you're supposed to do. So we just felt as that group that to say, it, it's just not a way to make, and plus by that time, it'll be dark at six-thirty. Are people going to sit out there in the dark anyways? And so, so that, at this point is canceled as well.
Yeah, thank you. I remember Officer Jenke came to our neighborhood watch meeting and she was talking about it and at the time, I think they were saying there was like some.
It was still there, but I think that decision was just recently made.
Okay, so that one's officially, it's off the table. Okay. A couple of questions, a few questions here. I saw that the, the property, the parcel of land over by Jonathan Flats is for sale. Then that was originally supposed to be the Dairy Queen's new home location. What happened with that?
They determined that the SAC, that the amount of SAC costs that they'd had through Met Council would be too expensive to be able to expand. And so they're planning on keeping their Dairy Queen and now they have that, that site up for sale. And, you know, it'd be allowed to be a fast food restaurant. If it was going to be anything else, somebody'd have to come in to get it rezoned.
So under the, so the, my understanding was that the, the owners of the Dairy Queen currently needs the spot that they're in right now. And then they were actually had purchased that land with intent to build. So are they intending on purchasing the land where they're at since they're staying?
I don't think they're intending, not that you've heard of.
So I, I don't think the owner wants to sell it. That's the way it was before. That's kind of why he branched off and did that, is the current owner wanted to keep it and he wanted to have his own property, so, but.
So just right now, the, everything's just kind of status quo.
Yeah.
I think honestly, I think it was the economic analysis they did with that. I mean, one of the challenges with a, a place like Dairy Queen is when the Met Council looks at SAC units, they look a lot in a place like that for outdoor seating. Because they have probably just as many, if not more, people who sit outside than they do inside in a facility like that. And they get charged SAC credits for that. Which makes it hard, it'd be easier if it was a twelve-month, I mean, it is a twelve-month operation, but people aren't sitting outside twelve months of the year.
Just to be clear for the record. Because a lot of people don't understand how this works. The SAC charges are charges from Met Council for sewage, right? It's not for, it's not coming from the city.
Listen, we do have a SAC charge for our local sewer, but it's nothing compared to what the Met Council says.
So it's not, it's not the local fees. This is coming from that council. Yep. Okay, um, second question is over by Bavarian Lyman. A resident asked me about, there's some additional train tracks that are set up along that railroad there. So it's a parallel track and he was asking if, and he said that, so the tracks were laid down parallel to what's there. And he was asking if trains are going to be idling and parked there, since there's those two, you know, two parallel tracks between Lyman and Chan High School.
Yeah, so the purpose of those, this actually has to do with the Southwest Light Rail being constructed. So Twin Cities and Western, who owns that line, lost their idle tracks closer to downtown Minneapolis. And so in order to be able to have idle trains and ones be able to go by, they had to move those, those side spurs out further. So the answer is yes, that's exactly what they're building them for. And it's basically to hold cars when they need other ones to go by.
So his concern was that there's going to be noise because he's, you know, pretty close to the tracks and there's, you know, there's a lot of, you know, a number of homes that are kind of like abut those tracks. And so with having a, you know, trains basically idling there, he's concerned, well, it's nice and quiet at night now. Now you have this diesel sitting out there that's just.
I, I, I don't, typically when they do that, they're not hooked up to the engine. It's usually not an idling diesel that's there. It's usually the cars that are being stored there until they're needed. So there, I, I would, I'd be surprised if there's a lot of noise that goes with it.
So it's really, so when they say idling, it means that they're just not in use, not necessarily physically running there.
Exactly.
They call them siding and they basically build trains there, so they park cars. But usually it's not, the engine's not there unless it's going to be moving it. I mean, I don't know what the, I, I was kind of, we had asked about what was happening there. We thought they were doing maintenance and now all of a sudden there's tracks there all the way. But they don't have to do any, they don't have to tell us anything about that. Because that's interstate commerce and they can pretty much do, or federal, they can pretty much do whatever they choose to.
Yeah. So which means that we don't have, so if, if let's say there's a bunch of residents complain and says, you know, what's going on with these things, you know, it's, we don't, there's not really much recourse.
See some Western, they're a short line railroad and we actually have a decent relationship with them. So if we did have issues, they're actually somebody I think we could actually talk to about it. I mean, you try to find somebody at U P to talk to and it's impossible, but, you know, Mark Wagner is the C E O of, of Twin Cities Western. I, you know, he's open to talk to anytime you want, so. So I, I, I don't know how responsive they'd be, but they're a lot easier to get ahold of than, than the big lines.
Yeah, like B N S F or something like that, yeah. Now, they, they also, they also had a question to asking about if we have like, let's say we intercede and, you know, and have some confiscation of like drugs or something like that from a, or drugs or stolen material or whatever from some things, police-related, do we get any money back from fines or confiscations from drug trafficking?
Well, it's sort of complicated. You probably answer this better than I do. I mean, it's, it sort of gets into our contract for prosecution.
Yeah, it, it all boils down to exactly what, you know, is situational or what's in question. So I mean, asset seizures. So for instance, if there's a narcotics arrest and we've seized either cash, some kind of precious metal, jewelry. And, you know, ultimately, there is a seizure and that's awarded, you know, to the state or the government, if you will. There's a percentage that comes back to the city. But it's, it's situational on what said property is and what the case looks like. But it's a formulation breakdown. Some goes to the state, some goes to the county, some goes to the municipality.
I'll tell you, on average, when I think of our forfeiture line and our budget, I bet you it's maybe nine, ten thousand dollars a year. It's, it's nothing substantial.
Yeah, it's pretty inconsequential in the big scheme of things for us.
Yeah.
It happens, no doubt we get some dollars. In some years you might see twenty or twenty-five, in other years you might see five thousand. But it's, in any case, I've never seen it be substantial.
And this is, is that, is that right, or I guess regulator or determined by like a state statute? Or is it by, it's by, someone mentioned like the prosecution or the prosecution type agreements? Is that, so that's between the agreements between like us and the county or because the county actually does the prosecution for us?
Yeah, to answer your question, I mean, it is based off state law. It's technically, it's, it's a civil process that can run concurrent or can run separately from any type of criminal proceeding. And there are some proposed changes and there's discussions in the work at the state level to kind of change the way that that works. It might follow more of a criminal process in the future, but it is based off civil law.
Gotcha. Sounds good. And the last thing that I have here is just a kind of an update for Southwest Transit. So I know that you, I know that I've given updates in the past for Southwest Transit. But there's been a lot of things going on. So the pandemic has impacted the rider services a lot. And the volume has been like really low. To give you some idea of like how bad the volume has been. And like, was it in the month, during the summer, the, the volume of riders basically doubled. But all total, we're still under ten percent of our normal volume, even with doubling of ridership. So that's, so we're, we're basically like in ninety percent empty capacity or unused capacity right now. And so with the funding down, there's some concerns that Met Council is looking at consolidating, maybe looking at consolidating transit for the opt-outs who are us, Minnesota Valley Transit, Maple Grove and Plymouth MetroLink. Maybe targets to be consolidated into as part of Metro Transit. Right now, we're looking at all the options that are out there. And one of the options that we're currently exploring right now is potentially a merger with M V T A because they're the, the largest in our area. And by forming a, a larger organization, there may be a potential to have a stronger lobbying effort or ability to justify potentially separating off from Met Council through either, I think through a state, through a state law, hopefully. Be able to be independent or be able to be moved under MinDOT. So that's, there's some options we're looking at. But right now, we're really concerned of losing our autonomy and the ability to use tax dollars that are generated from motor vehicle sales taxed by, you know, Carver County and Chaska residents to be able to be kept here for transit that serves our, you know, our community directly. One of the other things we're looking at right now is we, we met with a lobbyist, like with the executive board, we met with a lobbyist last week. And we'll be, we'll be bringing that to the, the commission next week. So hopefully continue moving forward with that because Suburban Transit Association, which is the gathering of the, the other for opt-outs in the. uh, the other for opt outs in the Twin Cities, um, hasn't been, um, successful in, you know, getting some of the funding that we've been needing to continue moving forward. So, um, that's, and that's all setting the stage for what's happened, uh, about a week and a half, two weeks ago. The governor issued a executive order forming a blue ribbon commission. Um, I have a copy of it here if anyone wants to see it, um, made up of a number of members that would be evaluating three primary, um, things related to Met Council. First is the role of the elected versus appointed metropolitan council members. The second item is the metropolitan council's role as the metropolitan transit or a planning, sorry, metropolitan planning organization. And identifying evaluate the ways in which the federal designation may complement and conflict with the council's responsibilities under Minnesota law. And the third item, which directly pertains to, um, us as a regional transit provider is the effectiveness of the delivery of regional transit service. This, the number of people believe, uh, you know, the general consensus within STA is that, um, most of the, the representation there may not be in favor of, you know, maintaining regional transit service. So there's a lot of concern there in terms of what that means. It was left to be seen depending upon, you know, how things go. They need to make a decision, a recommendation to the governor and to the legislature by the end of this year. So right now there's a, um, a very strong amount of, um, efforts that are being put forward into trying to, you know, get organized and figure out, okay, what information do we need to put forward? What, you know, how do we tell our story of why we opted out in the first place? And make sure that, you know, we're able to fight for the dollars that come from our communities to make sure they stay with our community. So we can provide the best value for our residents. That said, um, you know, I, you know, I'm hoping that, um, that, you know, Len Simmich will be able to, you know, kind of have a work session with us at some point. And maybe share more about some of the details of this because, you know, he's, you know, ear deep in this and can articulate a lot of like, you know, the, the, a lot of the structural issues that we're, we're challenged with. Um, and maybe how we can as a council or as a community can provide some support to demonstrate to this blue ribbon commission that, you know, we need to, you know, that we, we feel this is important to us and we want to maintain autonomy.
Targeting October 5th as a time when, uh, Len could come and talk to the council.
Yep. And I can send Matt the link to this too. So, um, and then Matt can share that with everyone as well. Yep.
He talked about bringing Met Chair Zelli out like the last time they had a conversation with him, but they.
They effectively did collect Clint Hoopaw and, um, and, um, and James, James Clark, our lobbyist, actually met with Chair Zelli and someone else, I can't remember who it was. And he said, oh, everything's going great and support. And then this next thing you know, he turned around and this was issued. And, you know, it's, so it, there's a lot of, I know a lot of concern that, that, um, a number of things that are driving this. Well, and here's what's interesting is that this particular order was apparently requested by Met Council directly to the governor. And the, um, and also the other, the, the other piece of it is that, you know, a lot of people believe that staff is a, a very strong influence kind of driving some of the discussion around some of these things. Now that said, it's hard to say, you know, what's really happening because we're not privy to a lot of those conversations. But, you know, what's, you know, we have like reached out to, you know, to Zelli and, and to others within Met Council. In fact, I've met with Deb Barber and Judy Johnson, um, just on Friday to try to, um, to try to build a relationship with them with a part, as part of STA. And right now we're, you know, trying to do everything we can to, you know, hopefully take steps to move forward. But the question is, is that we always hear the right thing, but we definitely need to see more things being done to, you know, help us move forward rather than just hearing the words without actions. And I think that's the concern that's been overriding across STA right now, especially with, you know, some of these actions. And also like for like, a great example is that, um, MVTA was recently told, well, I got it back in a second. So for those of you who aren't aware, um, MVTA serves the area going all the way down to Lakeville, but not including Lakeville. Right? Lakeville doesn't actually have service through MVTA. They actually have a red line service. It's actually Metro Transit that runs through MVTA service area and services Lakeville. But MVTA provides operations for that service. So there are drivers and that are actually driving the Metro Transit branded buses and taking that red line all the way up to Mall of America. Just about a week ago, um, they were given notice that Met Council was going to take back control of that. And of course we're raising a lot of concern again, consolidation and council, you know, using that as a lever to start, you know, peeling back or taking things back into Metro Transit's control. So, you know, it's things like that that are, um, disconcerting because there wasn't any warning given. There wasn't any like, hey, just want to let you know, there's some things, maybe some budget stuff that happens. We hear about those things after the fact. You know, or even in this case, MVTA heard about them after the fact, rather than giving the heads up that, you know, hey, we have some budget challenges. We're trying to figure out how to rectify the budget. They were just given a notice that by the way, we're taking back the service and that was it. So, and then things like that are, are, are challenges that I think are, um, causing concern amongst, um, the members throughout STA as well as Southwest Transit. That's just one example. So, yeah. Um, but so I'll pass it on to Matt and if anyone's interested in reading the full one or if anyone has any questions for me, if you really hit me up on that, happy to answer questions. Best I can.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner, our council member, Rob?
Uh, yeah, I'm going to ask someone to be guilty of what happens occasionally. I'm going to ask county things to a city thing, but, um, but you might, you'll know the information, Brian. I'm confident. So, uh, as neighbors on Big Woods Boulevard have gotten out, explored the great bike path down there. Was just curious on the conversation about why about, um, it stops about a mile before it gets the Jonathan Carver bike path there. It just didn't, I don't know why. I guess the question is, is when the county looked at doing that, why didn't they put the bike path all the way to Jonathan Carver? Cause there's a main artery bike path, I think runs all the way to Victoria on there. Do you know?
The question, why they didn't or?
Why they didn't or is it, is it planned to in the future? I guess is.
In the future, they still have, they still have, I, I considered a, a third phase of, uh, County Road 44 that they need to do. I would anticipate that that gets done when we see the industrial park go in. Uh, cause they're going to have to put turn lanes in, they're going to have to put curb and gutter. You know, so there's an urbanization of the road that occurs basically from where Razor's property is. If it, first Razor's property all the way to Jonathan Carver Parkway. That would, that would happen when that industrial park goes in.
Yeah, I just, it's just, it's just you're trucking along on the nice bike path and you get kind of the loophole and it's kind of like, just kind of ends and loops you back, which is fine, but it's just like, not much further. And I do worry like safety wise, because people will then go onto the road to make that connection, right? So that was kind of the question that kind of has come up.
The unfortunate part is they'll put it in then, but we'll be paying for it. So.
Be probably a mile. So I asked about how many miles of, uh, bike path and trails. There's, there's an extra mile. So.
Six miles, right?
Good question. But it get well used. It will definitely get used. Cause actually it came up because I said specifically, it's like, oh, my kids get older, you could ride bike to school. Like, well, maybe I don't want them to ride bike to school, but if they, new elementary school gets built, maybe that could be closer. The other question I have, just because the big talk of the town, I think from last time we met, it got a lot of press. Star Tribune had an article, is the Costco? And all of that, it's always interesting when you read articles because it made it sound so eminent and finalized and all the details. So it made me wonder, cause I think we've only seen a concept plan, correct? Am I correct on that? Okay. When, when is that, is there, is that preliminary plan coming soon?
Come back to the planning commission meeting this month, but they still have some, now that they're getting into the details of the actual, uh, site on the plan or the, yeah, the, the plan on the site. There are some issues that they still need to deal with, with steep slopes and things like that on the edges of the site that they just were not ready to be able to, uh, address in this shorter time period. I think they probably came up as a little bit of a surprise to them and not that there isn't solutions, but they just, it takes a little longer to do that. We're sort of expecting that probably in that November, December timeframe, you'd actually see, uh, the plans come back through for the preliminary. Um, and then once that preliminary occurs, you can see grading, uh, start after that. My gut tells me is that you probably will not see grading, uh, on that site this fall. You'll probably see it next spring. But, uh, um, I think the reason that that probably gained some, uh, traction for a story is because they were planned to go back to the, uh, September Planning Commission meeting, but then had to pull back because of that. And so, uh, I think the stories went out before, before anybody saw that they actually were delaying until this fall.
Yeah. And it's, it's like I said, it was just, it's always interesting because you, stuff like that happens. Then you get asked questions like, oh, when, you know, it's just like, whoa, we, that's, we're a concept plan. But I mean, it's, I generally feel like there was a good buzz and excitement actually over it. Uh, I know when we looked at it, we had some of the same concerns with kind of highway 41 handling that. And I think that was a lot of the feedback that I'd kind of see about.
Highway 41, parking, how does it affect the site? But yeah, there's, there's a lot of issues with the site.
That start getting answered in that preliminary brand, which is.
All of them are solvable. Um, it's just, it takes some time to do it. So.
And then, uh, finally just kind of echoing off, um, the comment about schools opening and just, you know, appreciate all the work and effort that's gone into planning and, uh, welcoming kids back, uh, two elementary kids now. I have a kindergartner now, so that's kind of weird to say that I have two elementary kids. Uh, and they've, if they've gotten used to, teachers have been great. You know, if I, we, we went further night to connect or connect 2020 and, you know, felt safe with the protocols of what was going on. And, um, you know, I continue to, uh, either good or bad every Thursday. I tend to check the school numbers for COVID cases per 10,000 and was happy actually to see this last week. It actually considerably dipped in Eastern Carver County because it was, had a three week trend of rising towards 20 and then it kind of dripped back to 14. So, uh, continue to, you know, be with the teachers and administrators and that are keeping our kids safe and doing the best they can in this uncertain times.
Fashion accessory is to match the mask to the shirt, at least in our household.
Yes, that's all. Yep.
Luke, anything? Isn't that cool? And I don't know if everybody could hear at home, but, uh, uh, Luke Milkier brought up about making sure we get, uh, your census stuff in. If you have not got it in, if they, if they call you and they leave you a message, please get back to them. Right? Aren't we at a end date here or is it still coming yet?
Door to door now. So if you get a post-it note on your door too, it should have a code to go.
I thought I saw something that it's October 1st, it ends. I don't, maybe I'm making it up.
It's supposed to be like end of October, then like, it sounds like the administration, the current administration is trying to move it up a month and get it done end of this month.
But I, I agree with Luke. I mean, we have, Minnesota has a lot. I mean, we could lose a legislator out of that. And, but just it's about district, districting and everything else and financial.
They're ending counting efforts for the 2020 census on September 30th, a month sooner than previously announced.
So.
I think that's been challenged though. So I might say.
It's challenged, but.
But anyways, get it.
As long as we have clarity fires.
Too surprised me. We're getting the smoke. All right. Anything else, Luke? Thank you. Gavin, anything? Chief? Nate? Matt? All right. Just a couple of real, uh, quick things. Meeting schedule, we got it tonight and we'll have one again next week. So we're back to back. So we'll have one on, what's the date? I don't even know. 21st. So I'll have one on 21st. I see we got both of our speed signs repaired or are they new or whatever? Uh, one I know got hit. So I know that one will be, somebody will be paying for it, not us, I hope.
One of them was actually failure on our part, our design filter. Another one will be.
Good. Glad to see those. Cause I, I know they make me slow down and I can't believe they don't make anybody else. So.
I always, I remember when, uh, Bill Monk was here, when we first put those up and we all joked that we thought all those, there's no way those things are going to slow down speed. I think they're really effective.
I think they're effective. When that one, when that one and, and the one on the bridge was, was down. That was like, we gotta get those because it makes a difference. It, it makes, especially the ones that flash and the light comes on. I think you're getting the ticket and all that. So, so thanks for getting those done, Brian. Uh, is highway 41 open to 169 now? Okay. So that's open. Okay. Cause. I was, came through there, you can, you could come back through there about over a week ago and it looked pretty close. So.
It's tomorrow. Cause I was curious about that. Cause I've seen some, uh, reports of that. And I actually went there this morning and had to take a detour to get going north. It routed you to Old Brick Road and around, but it looked like they were awfully close. So.
There's a video posted, uh, by MINDOT, how to drive and navigate that. It's interesting. So, uh, you, if, if you haven't had an opportunity to see it, it's out there. It's MINDOT, highway 169.
Don't go at a busy time. If you're here, like, if you're worried about it and navigating roads like that, go at a time that it's not going to be as much traffic.
Isn't it similar to if you're going to the smaller terminal at the airport?
It's like, it's exactly the same as that.
Go on like the opposite.
Time through it, 34th Street or whatever over, it's exactly the same.
Yeah, I thought so.
It's an inverted diamond.
Yes.
The last thing I just want to mention, uh, last Friday, which happened to be nine 11, I don't, I don't know if it was, they related it to that, but our, our veterans park was used, I think for probably some of the things that we built it for. Master Gunnery Sergeant Joe, I'm going to try this, Fadzek, I believe is how it's said. Retired from the Marine Corps with 29 plus years, but they had, there was, it was full of Marines and other service members. But it was pretty cool to see, uh, that's kind of the purposes that we built that for. And they used it. They had it set up for a stage like and chairs and, and the Marine Corps brought everything out. And so it was, it was pretty cool. So, uh, one congratulation to Joe. He is a, um, resident of Chaska. But I, I just, I just thought that it's something where certain, uh, Kevin posted some photos on, uh, the Chaska communication pages. But it was, it was just neat, neat to see the park utilized for that. And these were, most of the people that came in were out of town people. And actually a lot came from, um, overseas as well. Um, so they came in a long ways for his, for his, uh, retirement. So it's pretty cool. And some of the different things that they did in their ceremonies and, and stuff like that, I thought was really, it was pretty cool to see. So I snuck over and watched a little bit. So.
You invited?
Unofficially, yes. Unofficially I was.
Guy crouching around.
Oh, no, his, I talked to his wife, but it's, it's a long story. So no, I wasn't invited. All right. Last call. Otherwise, uh, motion to adjourn. Motion by council member Wong. Second by council member, uh, Hatfield. Uh, where are we starting here? Council member Wong. Council member Hubbard.
Hi.
Council member Hatfield. Council member, uh, Airline Shuttle. We'll see you a week from tonight. Thanks. And now we're going to stay on this and we're going to go back to our work session. So if you're interested, you can watch the work session or, uh, you can sign off and.